It is Tuesday, May seventeenth, six fifteen. This meeting will be conducted in person via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A. Section four oh three B two D and section six of the Stanford City Council rules of procedure as amended, May third, twenty twenty-two. Members of the public may join the meeting in person by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight five six seven seven five two two three two two and password four seven three eight three six or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Stanford website at W W W. Dot Sanford Maine dot org under email City Department, City Council. Counselor Martell will lead us this evening in the Pledge of Allegiance and the motion of moment of silence, and I will turn this over to Counselor Martell if everyone would please mute their computers.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for joining. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we'll call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Present.
Counselor Martell?
Present.
Counselor Hanselman?
Present.
Counselor Stackpole?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Present.
And I am Anne Marie Mistracchio, Mayor of the City of Sanford. We're joined this evening by Stephen Buck, the City Manager, and Larissa Ricketts, the Manager's Executive Assistant. First item on the agenda, the minutes twenty-two dash two eight two dash zero one, ordered to approve the minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on Tuesday, May third, twenty twenty-two. I think Counselor Hanselman wants to make a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve with one amendment on page seven of the minutes to remove Counselor Hanselman's comments, which are actually agenda, future agenda items and are listed correctly under that section.
Is there a second to approve with that amendment?
Prove as amended, second.
That is a second by Counselor Stackpole. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the vote. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell? You were not present at that meeting as a reminder.
I will abstain, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also, yes, that is five in favor with one abstention. Mayors' report, City Council Subcommittee reports. I'll begin if that's okay. And I just want to start my report by saying that I apologize to anybody who thought that we anticipated us meeting in person. I was really looking forward to it. Unfortunately, the cooling tower at City Hall, which really concerns, it takes care of all the ventilation and air conditioning here, is out. We're waiting for, as a lot of places are, a new one to come in. Hopefully, it will be in by the first meeting in June, and we will hopefully meet in person. It's just a little too close in there, a little too hot, and with no ventilation, it doesn't seem like with COVID cases rising, a really, it didn't seem like a good idea to me. So you can blame me for us being on Zoom. I'd much prefer, I am looking forward to meeting in person, I can tell you that. Municipal Operations and the Property Subcommittee met last Tuesday and discussed a number of items that are not on the agenda this evening. Cycle Sanford presented a proposal to build a pump track in Sanford. A number of possible locations were discussed, as well as a timeline for approval and completion. They will visit other pump tracks in Maine, assess various designs, and come back with more definitive plans. The School Department requested and was granted the use of Goodall Park to present a Free Wind Symphony Concert on July eighteenth. This performance is part of a citywide arts day put on by the newly-formed Sanford Arts Alliance. In the event of rain, the concert will take place in the Sanford Performing Arts Center. Parks and Rec Director Brady Lloyd gave an update on July third and fourth festivities. Online registration is now available for vendors and parade participants. Registration must be completed by June seventeenth. If anyone has any questions, please call Parks and Rec directly. And I have to say, every time I say Parks and Rec, I just think about that show, and they're nothing like that. The committee continued a previous discussion of picnic tables for Central Park, and it was decided to put a request into the Oscar Emery Trust for funding this endeavor. Public Works Director Matt Hill gave an update on road reconstruction. Unfilled positions in public work have resulted in some additional resources that are available for use in the current fiscal year. These funds will be utilized for paving streets that need urgent attention. This would be a short-term fix for the most problematic areas. Among the streets mentioned were school from Washington to Russian, portions of High, Lower End of Hanson Ridge where it meets Lebanon, Beulah, and Barbara. The committee also had a discussion about a paper street off Pierce Avenue, and a budding homeowner wants the city to give up the street or pave it. Since the street is one of two access points to an undeveloped backlot, neither of these actions is possible at this time. The homeowner will be reminded that the paper street is not his property, and he should not treat it as such. Absentee ballots for the June fourteenth election are available to request online at SanfordMaine.org/voterregistration, or come into City Hall to request your ballot and vote upstairs in the City Hall chambers. There are many activities planned for Memorial Day, May thirtieth, including a parade and the laying of wreaths around the city, but I wanted to invite all residents to the Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery Memorial Day Ceremony, which will be held at the cemetery on Stanley Road at one P. M. Governor Janet Mills will be a guest speaker, and the Saint Thomas School Choir will sing the National Anthem. That's all I have this evening. Other Subcommittee reports. Oh, Sue, she's going to correct something I said, right, Sue? Go ahead, Sue. Oh, it's not in chambers. It's not in chambers, is it? It's in the conference room.
It's on floor two R.
Oh.
Where I'm doing the voting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just assumed it was upstairs.
Yeah. Originally, that was the plan.
Okay.
It worked out kind of good for me that the air conditioning is not functioning, and I probably would have died up there, but floor two R is where I am, and thank you.
Okay, I'll correct it.
Yes.
So they follow the signs, though, right, Sue? If they just follow the signs?
Yes. Yes, there's signs directing them right next to the elevator, and...
Okay.
The girls in the office will give them directions if they don't.
Okay, thank you for the correction. I appreciate that, Sue.
Thank you.
Okay, other councilors have Subcommittee reports. Counselor Hanselman, go right ahead.
Thank you. The Public Safety Subcommittee also met last Tuesday. We had a great update from the Police Department, and it's a little bit lengthy, but I think it's great information to share with folks. We did receive two grants, one for twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars for enforcement of impaired driving, as well as a substance abuse disorder grant for twenty-six thousand dollars. So these items will help the Police Department perform their work, which is exciting. Sergeant Murphy shared a really great program that's begun and will last for a month in Sanford, which is COPS It Stops. It's going really well. It's a partnership with our Police Department and Legmere Transportation where officers are going to sixteen, I think he said, bus stops in town, meeting with Sanford kids, connecting with them, and having a chance to create some positive interactions and relationships. We also heard from Lieutenant Gagne with our Criminal Investigation Division, and he shared a lot of activity, actually, that's been happening that we don't necessarily hear a lot about, and including some training that's been completed, some crime scene photography that I actually saw personally when I was at breakfast one morning and kind of wondered what they were up to, so that was fun to hear. And they've assisted in an investigation involving some mail theft, in particular checks from people's mailbox that are being used to steal people's identities, so good work there. And they just, he mentioned that there's a lot of cyber-related issues, including email and phishing scams for folks to be careful about. It's taken up a bit of their time. Lieutenant Gagne also shared that our SROs are doing well, but they have expressed concerns that all of us parents should be thinking about, which is that kids are vaping in our schools, they're bringing vape pens to school. Just kind of something to be aware of and communicate with our kiddos about. And the chief also mentioned that he's working on getting a substitute SRO trained, so that in the event that our current SROs are unavailable, we do have somebody that can step in and fill their big shoes at our school sites. Detective Adams shared that our options clinician was working at the York County Jail because they, along with SMHC, were creating harm reduction bags to be distributed to folks that are leaving the jail or leaving the hospital, provide things like Narcan, fentanyl test strips, and other information on recovery resources. Detective Adams also mentioned there's been an uptick in the number of people living outside in Sanford. Unfortunately, Portland is no longer accepting any homeless folks. York County Shelter does have some availability, but that is a concern certainly that we have seen that uptick. Detective Adams has been working with local landowners so that she can cite people that are camping illegally on private property with trespass notices. Another big agenda item, I just want to give a shout out to our Animal Control Officer in doing a presentation, and we'll be talking about that in the agenda later on about our Animal Welfare Society contract, so I won't go into that. We also did have an initial discussion about the winter parking moratorium on certain streets that goes into effect November fifteenth to April first each year. The councilors that were present, including Counselor Brink and Counselor Martell and myself, felt that further discussion was warranted, and more thought needs to be put into any changes before bringing this forward to the full council for consideration. So we did get some great feedback from Director Peter Smith and Matt Hill from the Highway Department, but we will be discussing this again and looking at more detailed maps and hopefully getting some input from our Fire Department as well. And then the last thing was an update from Ian Howseal on COVID with some data, of course, that isn't or wasn't looking good, and I think continues to not be looking good. As of May sixth, we were a little over fifty percent utilization of our hospitals with also a rate of new cases of one hundred and seventy-seven per one thousand, one hundred thousand residents, which was up fifteen percent from the prior week. And Sanford's current vaccination rate is about seventy-four percent. So that was it from Public Safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hanselman. Counselor Stackpole, did you have a solid waste report?
Yes, we do. Solid Waste and Zoning both met. And good news, I think, in the Solid Waste Department, that we have been approved, Sanford has been approved, for a grant from the Maine DOT to participate in a curbside, I'll just call it a garbage, garbage plan. This will be something that will be, will be open to citizens. There may be minimal cost to this in the proximity of about five dollars per month, and I'm sure there'll be some kind of auto pay that you can enroll in. This is a strictly voluntary program. No one will be required to participate in this. And with this, you get a garbage pail, basically, a lined garbage pail, and you put your garbage in there. The last information I had that this also included meat products and paper towels. So, and then weekly, someone will come by, take that bucket, and give you a clean bucket or pail, if you prefer, and you can continue that process. The main point in this, first of all, personal story, the, we recently had to remove our garbage disposal from our house here because of a sewage issue that we had. My house is well over a hundred years old. We had a leak in the basement that was clogged up with residue from using our garbage disposal. So the plumber recommended we remove our garbage disposal, much to my wife's dismay. So for several months now, we've had to scrape our garbage into the orange trash bag to send the trash. I want to tell you, by Saturday, Sunday, that's pretty bad when you, when you open it up and dump something in there. So I'll be happy to get one of these pails and put my garbage in the, in the pail and get rid of it that way. So it will cut down on that kind of domestic problem that we likely, or most of us do have, if you don't have a garbage disposal. Secondly, it keeps all of that roughage out of the waste stream. And with our waste stream, what we pay for to dispose of our solid waste is by weight. So if our orange trash bags weigh less, we will, weigh less, we will be charged less, and that's a benefit to everybody, not just to the people who are participating in this particular program. It will be a benefit to everybody, the more people we can have participating in this. Personally, I think this is a great step up in services that can be provided to the city in this area. It is something that, at least I've been talking about in the Solid Waste Committee for several years, and it just has not been in the, the range of something we could afford to do. Again, this is, this is a program, you can participate in it, you can not participate in it, so that, you know, there's no, as with the orange trash bags, there's no hidden tax, there's no any of this other kind of concern around this, around this program. So I'm not sure when it's going to start. We just approved it, or are we, we, we just went through this at Subcommittee level, and so it should be a program that will be forthcoming. Secondly, on zoning, much more briefly, we met with the Planning Director, and the unfortunate news there is that the Planning Department is pretty much overwhelmed at this point. They are working, I believe, as hard as they can to catch up. They are behind. They've had personnel problems. We've had COVID issues, things like that. We talked to them about hiring outside consultants. The bad news there is mostly outside consultants are overwhelmed also, and they're trying to hire new staff, but haven't been able to find a suitable staff addition to help take up the slack, although I believe there were some applications in the pipeline. I don't think there's any, there's any update on that. I haven't heard any update that they've hired anybody. So the, the main message here is please be patient with the Planning Department. They are working very hard. They're, we're all aware of these issues, and it's a sign of the times, I guess, so. And that concludes those two reports for me.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Any other reports from councilors? I don't think there are, and now I will turn this over for the City Manager's report.
Thank you. So a very brief report this evening. The first item is the CGA Brownfield Site. The city's contracted engineering firm, TRC, provided notice that the last of the remediation starts next week, next Monday, the twenty-third. That's the wetlands restoration. So there was a wetland area on the CGA site. All other areas have been remediated, but there was solid waste contamination, concrete, plastics, and other materials that were removed out of that wetland area with the permission of Army Corps of Engineers. But there's a design plan to go back and re-vegetate that wetland, again, pursuant to the Army Corps of Engineers requirements. That's going to be accomplished over the next couple of weeks. Then, finally, we can turn over the CGA site, as well as the adjoining Maine Turnpike Authority Environmental Remediation Lands of about a hundred acres, two Walden Green Energy, four solar development on the two parcels combined. This has been a long time coming in getting to this point. There's been tremendous cooperation with DEP, Army Corps of Engineers, and, most importantly, the multipurpose grant that allowed for the final assessment, as well as the remediation of the final elements that were there, in conjunction with the DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, formally doing a remediation for the copper containing and contaminated waferboard waste that was still on site. So it's been a large partnership over an extended period of time. If you drive by the New Dam Road now, there's fencing there, but you can look through the fencing right at the site. It looks wonderful. Tremendous improvement from what it used to be. Charter Review Committee, so pursuant to the city charter, every ten years, there is to be appointed a Charter Review Committee. The council has done that. That committee is tasked with making recommendations to any amendments within the, within the charter, based upon the last ten years' worth of operations. And any of those that are so supported by the City Council will go forward for referendum consideration this November. Committee has finally completed its review of all sections. We're to produce a redline copy for them for the next Monday meeting on May twenty-third. They'll start the final review of that redline product and make amendments to that work product. The largest expense of time and effort really revolved around Article Six of the current city charter, which is the, which looks at the function of the Budget Committee, its composition, the public's participation, the process of review and recommendation of both municipal and school budgets. There are also quite a number of definitions that are proposed to be added to the charter as far as definitions are concerned, providing clarification for those elements that have been identified over the last ten years. There will be a public hearing by the Charter Review Committee. That's slated for June sixth of this year, and it's going to, the Charter Review Committee's been meeting at ten fifteen in the morning, but they're going to push that public hearing into the evening hours. So we're going to get finalization of that, and we'll get that posted out to the public so that they can participate at that level. And then the committee will then submit their work next at, for the July nineteenth council meeting, and they will make their recommendations at that point in time. Subsequent to that, if the council so chooses to take any of those amendments forward, they will be a requisite public hearing process pursuant to the council-supported amendments that would go forward in November as well. Mineral Extraction Task Force, we met for the eleventh time this past Monday. The full draft review ordinance, those sections that are applicable and that will become part of Chapter two eighty were proposed to the group. Those amendments to Chapter one forty-nine, which is our licensing, has been proposed to the group, well, as Chapter one twenty. So those who are reviewed, the review is going to take longer than was, or might have been participated without we get it done in the meeting, but that's not the case. So we've scheduled our twelfth meeting for next Tuesday on the twenty-fourth. We seek to complete the review at that point in time, make the additional amendments that are being proposed by the working group. I don't find this wide disparagey there, other than around the fee schedule that's in there, and a couple of other elements that I think are very much resolvable. So we'll get that work product forward, bring that to the City Council for their starting review on that, and if they so support it and/or make amendments, we'll get that done, and then we'll push that to the Planning Board for their review for those elements that are involving Chapter two eighty in our zoning. Next piece that I have is rumble strips. So I have a state notification in here that received this. I think it just, I saw it just, just today. So the Maine Department of Transportation has installed rumble strips along many of the major routes here within the community and statewide. They note in here the ninety percent reduction in head-on collisions that have been perfected by the use of rumble strips, but the reason for this notification is that they note that there's been a lot of complaints by homeowners, you know, adjacent to some rumble strips as they're being hit. I know my one dog ago, my dog, if I hit the rumble strip, he would growl at me in the truck. He didn't like that, so, so my dog used to concur with it. So they've come up with a new design. It's, it's the same sinusoidal shape as what they use currently, but they're going to do them with less depth and, I think, of a smaller diameter. So it will give the same alert, similar alert to the drivers without producing as much noise that translates off to impacted properties along those routes. Also providing notifications that they intend to do the new install from Route four north Berwick to Sanford, beginning at the forty-five mile sign at the Lebanon Road and continuing approximately seven miles to the Raised Island south of Route one oh nine in Route four intersections. They're also going to do that on Route one oh nine Wells, Sanford, beginning again at the El Velvet Circle and continuing two point two miles to the Kenabunk Road and Route ninety-nine. Be looking for that. The last thing that I put in here for, for public reference is the schedule for the Southern Maine Veterans Memorial Cemetery Association's Memorial Day Ceremony, as the mayor had talked about, the governor coming in here. So I put this into the packet so that people can look at the, the official schedule of elements that will occur that day. So the governor will be speaking, air will be speaking as well, and they have the keynote speaker and the singers and such listed out here. So all I have for this evening. Thank you very much.
Anne, did you have a, Counselor Hanselman has her hand up and has a question, I think, of the City Manager?
I do. I'm just wondering if that June sixth public hearing date is set in stone, and the reason I ask is, I know Chair Honig and I both have seniors award ceremonies that night. I know his kiddo's in the top ten, so I don't know if that's a conflict for him or not.
Okay, I don't, I don't think that it is set in stone. We just conferred with Larissa today that that was, that was the date, but we'll check back with the committee when we meet, we're meeting again this coming Monday.
Thank you.
My guess is that's a pretty busy week because it's graduation week. I would just say that you won't get the kind of people that you might want at a public hearing, so sure next week you guys can talk about that.
That date was agreed with the chair previously, but it had originally been thought of as a daytime meeting, so the new evening time might, might change things, so.
And we did just get the schedule recently, so that that might be part of it as well. But I just want to bring it to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the City Manager before we go on? Thank you, Steve.
Welcome.
Communications and presentations, twenty-two dash two seven eight dash zero one, Presentation on the Findings of the In the Know Community Info Survey. And I think our communications person, Jordan Wilson, is going to be taking this. Rex, Steve?
Yes, she is.
Okay, Jordan, floor is yours.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so tonight we'll be going over the findings from our community info survey, so if you want to go to the next page, Steve. All right, so the survey was live from March tenth to April eleventh, and in that time we had four hundred and eleven survey responses. We needed at least three hundred and seventy-eight respondents for a accurate sample size, and we got that, so that's perfect. The survey was posted on the City Facebook, it was shared in the Happening, Sanford Live, Work, Play, Sanford Main, the page, and different community partners shared it on their Facebook as well. Paper surveys were available in City Hall, at the Trachten Center, at Sanford Housing Authority, and in the libraries. And some community partners also put the survey in their email newsletters. I also was on Chamber Talk with Rick Stanley on the Legend Station to speak about the survey. All right, so you can go to the next one, Steve. So these are the demographics from our survey, and the first one is the age demographic. And as you can see, we had a small majority of it was at sixty-five plus residents, and which is great because that was a demographic that I was trying to target, because I wanted to hear more from them because they are the least online. And then looking at our resident breakdown, a majority of our residents, or a majority of the respondents have lived in Sanford for twenty-plus years, and about seventy percent of our respondents are women, so with the next survey, we'd have to make a little bit more of a strategic effort to target some male respondents. But all in all, it's pretty good. All right, Steve, we can go to the next one. So these are the quantitative key findings from the survey for the group as a whole, and in a little bit, we'll break it down by age. Our suspicions were confirmed. A majority of residents consider the Happening a primary source of information about the city. As I've said before, I think this is probably because our website is difficult to use, and the City Facebook wasn't really being utilized. And speaking of the website, about thirty-four percent of respondents had visited the city website in the last year, and a majority of these visits were to look up information about the city. A little more than a quarter of our residents have watched a City Council meeting either on Zoom or pre-recorded, or pre-recorded or live meeting on Town Hall streams. And this number was actually a little bit higher than I was anticipating, so I think that is promising. And same for the other two data points. I think those are pretty good, if you ask me, but it definitely gives us some room for improvement. All right, let's go to the next. All right. Let's go to the next one. So these are the more qualitative key findings, the responses to the open-ended questions. And these are the biggest issues or concerns for the group as a whole. A majority of residents want to know more about city and community events. Our residents want to be involved in what's happening in the city. And our residents also want our city leadership to be involved. They want them to be present and be active in Sanford. They want to see our leaders showing an interest in being a part of the community and kind of understanding the wants of the community. Public safety was a very big concern. Our residents want more updates on the police, the fire department, as well as the Department of Public Works. But that being said, it was, a lot of it came back to taxes, taxes, taxes. That was the largest concern for our residents. Changes to their taxes, where the tax dollars are spent. And for some residents, it is anything that involves their tax dollars. They want communications on that. Additionally, transparency is important to our residents. They kind of want a better understanding of why the city makes the choices it does. And they would like to receive more background information on these decisions. And lastly, plenty of our residents let us know how difficult the website is to use and let us know that we needed a new website. So I can say that that is on the way. All right. And you can go to the next one, Steve. So we did the survey to uncover what information our residents want to receive, as well as find out where they would like to receive this communication. And the top four were the city's Facebook page, followed by the city's website, an email or email slash an e-newsletter, and materials billed or mailed directly to the home. All right. And you can go to the next one, and this will start kind of our age breakdown. And we'll start with our 65-year-old plus residents. So these residents feel somewhat disconnected from the city. I think this is partially because of the absence of the Sanford News and the Journal Tribune, as well as our focus on online communications. That being said, the Sanford-Springville News is doing a great job of closing that gap. And about 70% of our 65-plus residents have read an article about Sanford in the Sanford-Springville News during the past 12 months. Surprisingly, about 60% of this age demographic also visited the website, but they were pretty, they informed us that the website was not easy for them to use. And that being said, about 40% of the 65-plus age demographic would like communications via the city's website. But this was the highest demographic asking for offline communications, such as materials mailed to the home, which was their most popular choice. But that was closely followed by automated phone calls, as well as advertisements and local papers. And the issues our 65-plus residents are most concerned with are the budget and taxes, as well as upcoming elections. Okay. So on to the next one, which is that 45 to 64-year-old age demographic. And Facebook was really popular with them. They seemed fairly plugged into what's going on with the city, and they want to be more involved as well. About 90% of these respondents said they had seen a city's Facebook post in the past 12 months. So that's kind of nice to hear. Additionally, 65% view Sanford-Springville Happening as the primary source of, or a primary source of information about the city. So it's not surprising that about 65% would prefer the city's Facebook as a method of receiving communications. And an e-newsletter was very popular with this demographic as they want more communications. And we can send e-newsletters and text messages with our new website, so that will be an easy fix. And this age demographic wants more council updates. They want more communication about future events and projects. And this group was actually the most vocal about the quality of our website. Okay. Next up is the 25 to 44-year-olds. These residents are very much online, and 78% have visited the city website in the past 12 months. And most of these visits to the website were to pay a bill or register a vehicle, et cetera. Similar to the previous demographic, a majority of the 25 to 44-year-olds prefer the city's Facebook as a method of receiving communications. And about 25% of this age demographic is very satisfied to satisfied with the city's efforts to keep residents informed about local issues. Not bad, but there is plenty of room for improvement. And this demographic was most concerned with, or more concerned with safety and school updates than the other demographics. But compared to the others, they still want that info about election and taxes. All right. And the last age demographic is the under 25s. So the 50% and this 44% was honestly a little bit low to me. And I was expecting those numbers to be a bit higher since this demographic is very online. But I think it might be low because they're not necessarily searching for information about the city while they are online. But that being said, online communications is the best way to reach them. Only about 5% of our under 25-year-old residents have streamed a live or pre-recorded version of a city council meeting in the 12, in the past 12 months. So this is definitely a number I think we should kind of focus on increasing and maybe through increased targeted communication to that age demographic, we will be able to increase that number. Like other demographics, they're interested in elections. However, they did request more info about financial and housing assistance programs, as well as infrastructure. But all in all, that was pretty much all I had for the findings of the survey right now. All this information will be extremely helpful going forward with informing our communication strategy. And it really gave me some good insight into our residents. But that's pretty much all I had for that. Is there any questions from the councilors?
Any questions? That was some interesting data there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have, I have a question, Jordan. So you, you mentioned you'll be able to do messaging through the, the new website. Is that, is that something people will be able to sign up for? They'll, they'll give us some information or put it on the website? And then we put out a message, it will go to whatever their messaging app is?
Yeah. So a lot of people that ask for messages, they ask for it to be similar to how the school does it.
Yep.
And so I definitely think when we have like parking bans and things like that, having a quick text message would definitely be helpful.
My dog, my dog is barking here. It's right, right beside me. You can't see her. But she's, she's learned to bark. And so I'm sorry. Go, go ahead. I'm sorry for the interruption. I'm unmuted. I wouldn't have bothered. Whoop, there she goes. I'm going to mute for just a second. Go ahead.
But yes, it will be an easy sign up on our website, and I'll have a little bit more information about the logistics of that soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just waiting for the fire. Okay. We know where they're going somewhere. All righty. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item under presentations are 22-286-01. Presentations by candidates running to fill vacant city council seats. All of the candidates were invited. Candidate Termath, Mike Termath, was unable to attend this evening. And we received, I think it was notice yesterday from candidate Dennis Woodruff that he would be not attending this evening. And I'm not sure if it's because we went to Zoom. So in light of that fact, I will, Nathan Hitchcock is here this evening, and we will give him his five minutes. But I will invite every, all of the candidates back again on the, on June 7th, which is a week before the election, to make a presentation again. I just, and if somebody, and if, if perchance we are in Zoom, we will make arrangements for anybody who needs to come into City Hall and Zoom from here. We can give them a, a room by themselves and set them up so that they can Zoom in. I don't want anybody to feel that we are making it difficult for people. We're just trying to help get the word out for all of the candidates. So given that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Nathan Hitchcock. And if everyone else would just mute, and I will mute as well, so that we don't interrupt. And I'll let you start with your five minutes, Nathan. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Mistracchio, and everyone else who was on the call here today. For those who don't know who I am, my name is Nathan Hitchcock. And to the people of Sanford and Springville, on June 14th, I will be asking for your vote to become your next city councillor. I initially moved to Sanford in 2018 after living here as a kid in the early 2000s. Despite having to leave due to my family needing to go elsewhere for employment, I always wanted to check in on my hometown and see what it was like as an adult and see if that sense of community I had back as a kid was still there. And happy to report that I do feel that sense of community here, even now as an adult. And the main reason why I'm running for city council is to foster that sense of community even more and make Sanford and Springville a great place to live. Now, whoever ends up winning this election in, in June, we're going to have some big shoes to fill. Whether you agree with him or not, John Tuttle was a major presence here in the city of Sanford and Springville. And throughout my discussions with people here in town and here in the city, one of the major things I always heard about John Tuttle was that whether he agreed with you or not, or you agreed with him, he'd at least take the time to listen and to talk, to talk with you. And that's something that I hope that I can bring to the city council in my term as city councillor, should you elect me. Now, my career as an attorney, I spend my time talking with individual people and helping them guide through a rather complicated legal system in government, and in government, and try to come up with creative solutions to address their concerns. And I think my job description as an attorney would fit very well in the city council. Oftentimes, I'm presented with clients who have certain issues they need addressed and how certain actions taken by government will affect their livelihood. And I can come up with creative solutions for these people in order to ensure that their integrity is intact. They can continue to be contributing members of society, while also ensuring public safety. And so again, I hope to bring those qualities that in my career to city council to serve you, the people of Sanford and Springville. Now, given my career is more focused on individuals in a group setting, I also have experience working with groups in order to turn issues and obstacles that face us into productive and creative solutions and help foster growth. And what I'm mostly focused on here is my time with the Sanford Mariners baseball team. I joined the Sanford Mariners Board of Directors in 2017, and I currently serve as their vice chair. Now, one of the biggest struggles that we've had to face, that the city's facing, that you've all faced, is how to move on after a pandemic. You know, there are many restrictions placed on our league in order to facilitate a season. But by working together, talking about the, the issues we're facing, coming up with solutions, we were able to produce a great season in 2021, and we're looking forward to 2022. So I do have experience working with groups to foster the community and to get people, you know, excited for what's involved in their community through the Sanford Mariners. And I hope to continue that as your city councillor. Now, lastly, a very important job as city council is to ensure that your taxpayer dollars are being used in an effective manner, and we're not overreaching by overtaxing or overspending. And I think a great model that I've learned on how to help with taxpayer dollars is by serving on the Board of Trustees for the Sanford-Sewish District. I've served there since early 2019 and currently serve as the chair, Chairman of the Board of Trustees. And if you ever were to take, take a listen to any of the meetings of the board, you'll see that our financials are very well lined up in the sense we are cost-effective. We do everything we can to ensure that the people, the ratepayers are not being overcharged. And we're doing, making spending only when necessary and keeping the people first and foremost in our minds. And I've learned a great deal working with the Sanford-Sewish District, and I hope to bring that over to city council as well. So for all those reasons, I'd ask for your vote on June 14th to become the next Sanford City Councillor. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nathan. That was really informative. And I'm going to extend the invitation again that if you so choose, that you would be allowed to have some time at the June 7th meeting as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I gotta find the right sheet here, guys. Okay, we are now at public participation for items that are not on the agenda this evening. I have a note that Diane Connolly wanted to speak this evening.
Yes, ma'am, mayor. Can you hear me?
I can. I can't see you, but I can hear you, and we do recognize your voice. You know, I prefer that people show their faces.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Diane Connolly. I'm a citizen of Springville. I have a clarifying question to begin with. There is something on the consent agenda. Can the public talk about that during public participation? Or can they be heard when you do the consent agenda?
No, I think it would be better if you just spoke now because that consent agenda won't be discussed unless councillors have an objection.
Okay, ma'am. First of all, my comments this evening are not of any position that I have on a board or a committee. They're of my own. There is a retail marijuana establishment off of 109 on Renaissance that is admitting an odor problem, and it's been going on for at least two months. The other odor problems I have addressed with the codes department down on Semata. It is still ongoing as of yesterday. These are trips that I make every day. I don't go out of my way to find these things. These are just regular travel routes. You can't go even down Main Street or anywhere near Walmart with your windows shut open or anything without smelling that. I'm sorry, it's not right. It needs to be addressed. And if you're going to give a renewal license to Renaissance, I would suggest that codes goes down and checks their scrubber systems before you do that this evening. My second comment is for the land bank. 199 Jagger Mills Road, the old mill that came down, that was torn down. We're still looking at a heap of pile of a mess down there. And I'd like to know how long that's going to stay like that, considering that the other houses and other establishments that we've taken down through the land bank have been cleaned up and, you know, fenced off. The fencing's now broken, and there's still a heap of mess down there. And those are my comments this evening, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Diane. Normally I don't allow, and I don't, I'm not going to allow back and forth, but Jamie, if you could clarify for us, I know you've probably spoken about this, but if you could clarify for us as far, in relation to the consent agenda, if any of those issues are a reason why we would not, why we should remove from the consent agenda any of those items to discuss separately?
This is the first time I've heard a complaint on 9 Renaissance. I had noticed one odor problem myself and had spoken with the owner about a month ago. But that's the first I've heard of a citizen complaint about Renaissance. And if it continues to be a problem, I'm more than happy to talk with the owner and address any concerns. All of these marijuana property owners are very willing to address concerns because they realize the value in these licenses. The Semata Drive complaint that Diane referenced, we, we are aware of that. I've actually identified where the problem is and what the problem is. The, the grow facility has ordered new parts to, to scrub the air on a new appliance that was installed. They had told me they were going to change their practices and not use the equipment until the scrubber has been installed. I, I did get a call from Diane yesterday letting us know that she was down in that way again and could still smell it. I have a call into that property owner as well. I feel comfortable in you guys issuing these licenses because thus far, the property owners have been very cooperative every time I call them. So I don't object to the licenses. I, I feel comfortable that we can address it with the. to the licenses. I feel comfortable that we can address it with the property owners.
Thank you, Jamie. That's very helpful. Okay, anybody else who would like to speak under public comment, I remember the public, who would like to speak under public comment for items that are on the agenda? I see a hand, an actual hand. That's Jim Diermond. Jim, could you just identify your name and where you live, please? And then you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor. I'm Jim Diermond. I live in Springville, Morrison Road. And under my name here, I'm the chairman of the Sanford Republican Committee. I'm just curious, as we just listened to Nathan Hitchcock for five minutes, did a good job, but I noticed that when you, when he finished, the other two people, you're offering them to come at the next city council meeting, but you also gave Nathan a chance to speak again. I just wondered why he gets two bites at the apple.
I just thought it was fair. I am just trying to be totally fair here. And the other two had the opportunity to come this evening and chose not to, and then we wouldn't have had next Tuesday regardless. And the truth is, I'm just saying that it's my decision, and I decided that the most open way was to make sure that everybody had the opportunity to come again, to be seen all in a line. That's all. Has nothing to do with me...
Sorry.
Excuse me, go ahead. I was just answering your question.
Yeah, do you know why the other two couldn't make it?
Well, the first one had a conflict, and the second one just sent a brief message that said, "Count me out." I think it was last night or this morning. I'm not sure when.
Well, I just don't think it's fair. I don't think you should give somebody a second shot. I appreciate him coming, and he spoke very eloquently, but I don't think it's fair. And I don't know why you'd want to reach out and give someone a second bite at the apple. I don't know what timeframe you use to notify people, but people do work. Not everybody has the ability, like some of us who are retired, to come and go as we please. But I just don't think that that was really a fair way to do it. And I'd like you to maybe take a look at that and readdress it.
I appreciate your comments, Jim. I was, made the decision in what I saw as the ultimate in fairness. And it is a Tuesday night when councillors will meet. And so I guess I felt that it was a fair time to schedule this kind of opportunity. And truthfully, I only planned to do it this evening, but because the other two couldn't come, then I decided to make it part of the June 7th meeting. And in fairness, I decided to make it also available to Nathan. So thank you very much for your comments.
How was it fair that Nathan gets to come on a second time?
I'm, I'm, thank you, Jim, for your comment. Jim, thank you for your comment. That's the extent of my interaction with you this evening. It is my decision, and I'm sorry if other councillors want to overrule me and vote it down. I think that you're, I think I don't understand your objections to what I consider the ultimate in fairness to all concerned, because we could have not had it next Tuesday. Nope, thank you. You are done with public comment. No, sorry, I'm sorry, but this is as much as...
I don't like that answer, Mayor. I'm sorry. I don't like your answer. And it's not fair.
Well, you don't have to like it.
And for you to make a decision like that, with no discussion...
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. I appreciate your, I appreciate your opinion.
No, you don't, Mayor. No, you don't. You don't appreciate it.
I absolutely do.
Well, then let me ask you a question.
I just don't agree.
Madam Mayor?
Jim, please, please, stop. This is, we'll have to discuss this at a later time. We're done. We're going to go on in the agenda.
Madam Mayor, just let me make a point.
Councillor Stackpole, let's just not get into a thing here. I'm just done. I was trying to explain in a really nice way.
There was no second date. It's through your graciousness that there is a second date, or else these people would not be able to speak at all. So they should be happy...
I thought I made that really clear. I appreciate it.
They should be happy to get one bite at the apple, Jim, and not be concerned. That person got to speak because he showed up. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Councillor Stackpole. I am sorry that we had to have this back and forth, but sometimes that happens. But we're going to go on to the next item on the agenda. Unless there's anybody else that likes, that would like to speak under public comment. Hey, public hearings? There are none. Consent agenda. Unless, 22-264-01, unless there is objection, and after hearing from Jamie Cole in the codes office, the consent agenda will be approved as written. Wait a minute. I don't see any objections. Consent agenda is approved. Old business, there is none. New business, 22-245-01, order to approve the following new license requests and to authorize the city clerk to sign on behalf of the city council, should the meeting be held remotely due to COVID-19 protocols. Number one, new marijuana establishment, tier two from D-list, LLC, 72 Emory Street, Sanford, Maine. Number two, new marijuana establishment, tier one from Hancock Lane, LLC, 27 Hancock Lane, Sanford, Maine. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Motion by Councillor Brink, and a second?
By me.
By Councillor Stackpole. Thank you, Councillor Stackpole. I don't think, is there anything that we need to hear about this, Jamie?
Note, just the standard. These properties have been inspected. The 72 Emory Street one is a change of ownership for the property. But in reality, they're both renewals. Just, it was advertised as new because it's a new owner for the property.
All right. Thank you very much, Jamie, for clarification. So, any more discussion by the council? Seeing none, I will call the vote. Councillor Brink?
Yes.
Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. 22-277-01, order to adopt the City of Sanford Technical Manual to provide modern and consistent standards to the building of infrastructure within the public right-of-way and on public property. I'll have a presentation first before I ask for a motion. And I think Matt Hill is here to do that, Director of Public Works.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Matt, I'm working on getting you share capacity here, just a moment.
Thank you.
There you go, Matt.
Okay, can you see my screen?
It's black. Oh, now we do. It's all set.
All right. Well, I guess before we kind of dive into the details on the technical manual, in coordination with the city manager and the planning director, I think we probably want to amend the adoption of the manual to just an acknowledgement of the manual at this point. The city's legal council has raised an issue whereby if the council formally adopts it, it may technically be considered ordinance. So I just, I would just offer that perhaps we can revise that to acknowledge instead of adopt, and sort out the details. What I did want to do was get the technical manual back in front of you. We have taken the PDF document and made it a fully interactive hyperlink for it. So what you see in front of you now is the 278 pages of the entire document, but it has a very handy table of contents, put together by Juliana Paulette and Matt Preventer in my office. So basically, you can jump to any of the sections of the manual. You can see the table of contents, you know, directly with the document, and kind of browse through it and go through it, any single point of the document. You can kind of go back and forth. The strengths of this document are that it really, it doesn't really invent very much, to be very honest with you. If you were to go to just say a section on traffic studies, you know, the traffic studies really are well set by Maine DOT already. And if you were to click on the hyperlink in there, taking you to the traffic movement permit that's associated with larger developments, you can simply click on that link. It will take you, or it should take, there we go. It takes you to the references page, and then you can click on, geez, I forgot which. Let me go back to that section here very quickly. So that was link number one here. So I click on that. I can go, I can scroll up to link number one, and it takes me directly to the Maine DOT traffic engineering design page. So in essence, it's, it's, it's an intelligent document that will let you go back and forth. And interestingly enough, we've already had some calls from engineers and developers who were looking through our ordinance, unable to find, say, the, the one from last week was somebody who was looking for drainage standards. And I said, oh, great, you know, I can direct you towards our draft technical manual, which is online, and you can go right to section 3.1, and it answers all the questions that you had. And furthermore, it's not reinventing anything. It's standards you're already familiar with. Maine DOT happens to carry the same standards for the design storm for drainage design. So I do want to sit down and present this with the planning board a little bit more and go through it. There is more to add to it. The strength of the technical manual, I guess, not being adopted, is it does leave a lot of the decisions in the professionals' hands. You know, it, you know, not to be, you know, a little outrageous here, but you know, probably the city council should not be voting on whether or not, you know, we have 12.5-millimeter mix for asphalt or 19-millimeter mix. That's really, most of that is left in the hands of the professionals. And as standards change, as they continue to evolve, you know, it's really tasked to the engineering division to make sure that those are good standards, to vet those through the process and make sure that, you know, what people are proposing are good things. Through the planning and development process, we already have those steps basically built into it. We have engineering oversight and review of these proposals. But by having a sole source technical manual, it's able to kind of draw that out of the ordinance and put it into kind of like a one-stop book that professionals, developers, and even residents can pick up and get a true idea of what they're getting into when they propose to do development. Because sometimes it's not straightforward, and we have, over the years, encountered people that, you know, did not know what they were getting into, and we've had to educate along the way. This gives you from beginning to end, really, not how to go about through the process, but once you get to each step, you know, what to do. So that's essentially the strengths of the technical manual. Again, I would ask tonight not to formally adopt it, but just acknowledge it at this point. And then as we continue to get more comfortable with it, you know, and honestly, there's going to have to be another effort to go back into the ordinance and start weeding out the technical details from the ordinance. You know, we'll have to work on straightening that out. But our focus to this point has been to make the technical manual a sole source document, an intelligent document, and a real useful tool for somebody who's coming to Sanford and Springville to do, you know, complex development in a world where construction can be difficult, and there are a lot of unknowns. So this really should spell things out for everyone.
Thanks, Matt. I'll make sure I read that when I ask for the motion, read it the proper way. Do any councillors have any questions? I don't see any hands up. So I am going to ask for a motion to acknowledge the City of Sanford Technical Manual to provide modern and consistent standards to the building of infrastructure within the public right-of-way and on public property. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Stackpole, and I think the second was by Councillor Brink?
Becky, yeah.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say real quick, this looks great. You know, it's a great place we can refer people to if they have questions. So great job here, guys. And Consular Hanselman has a question.
Oh, there's a lot of hands up there. Oh, my goodness. Councillor Hanselman?
Thank you. Steve even got to raise his hand. I just wanted to comment that, and as I perused this document, it felt really overwhelming because well out of my level of expertise. But I recently had somebody define business friendly as predictability. And I think this manual, in conjunction with other efforts we're making in our community to communicate our ordinances and how things need to be done, is helping us become more predictable for developers and investors and folks looking to do work here in Sanford. So I really appreciate the efforts that were put into this manual. Thank you.
And Steve, do you want to go last? And I'll call on Councillor and Deputy Mayor Hurley?
That's fine. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was just going to comment as skimming through it. Of course, I made sure that my sidewalk preference is there. So it actually brings it into one location, shows what streets require concrete, you know, one block off of Main Street, the street and that street. So I think they've done a good job bringing some of our preferences from our ordinances into this document. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Yes, let me, let me lower my hand. All right. So there's several points in here. So first and foremost, I want to thank Matt Hill and Beth Delavalle for all of the work that's been done on this. Although Matt says with modesty that there's nothing really new in here, it's the compilation that's new, right? It's the assemblage of copious amounts of information that addresses the standards that are called out within our ordinance, you know, to meet standards. Yet, when I, when I have, you know, the business unfriendly aspect of a developer or a businessperson in our community say, hey, where does it say that? Here's the document, right? So that's the important part of the assemblage of this, this information. It goes hand in hand with the Small Business Advocates Development of the Business Guide, that brings all of those resources into one PDF document or printed document that they can simply touch the links and find the information that they're seeking, without having to spend hours searching for that and to be able to address it. Beth Delavalle, a planning director, has worked with our legal council that recognizes that the council's acceptance of this this evening pursuant to your pending vote is not an act of ordinance. It does not mandate that these standards be utilized. It simply is a compilation as a guide, and it is a reference to, this is a way of meeting those standards, is by the utilization of the technical manual as your reference point to accomplish that. But it's not the only way that you can meet the standards that are called out. So that is the delineation here that needs to be made this evening. If, if at a forward point in time, we make a couple of significant amendments into 280 and 275, then, and only then, you could actually adopt this as pursuant to ordinance, and then it would be, this would be the way that you'd meet the standards. But until that point in time, it's a way of meeting the standards. I wanted to make sure that delineation was accurately made there. And again, I thank the departments that worked extensively on this for the significant compilation of the information that's contained here. And thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any other questions or comments by councillors? Being none, then we'll vote. Councillor Brink?
Yes.
Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is a unanimous vote. Okay, 22-259-01, order to appoint Sanford representatives to the Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission's General Assembly to fill two vacant seats. Steve, I'm going to let you present on this first, and then I'll ask for a motion.
Yes, so we recently received communications from Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission as far as the fulfillment of Sanford's three seats to the General Assembly for this ensuing year. They're reactivating a lot of this work that has been difficult for them to achieve during COVID, as far as reassembling people for live meetings and such. So again, we are afforded three positions. In the past, myself was part of the General Assembly by position. Jim Nyman, our former economic development director, was named, and Beth Delavalle, our current planning director, is named as those three. And Beth Delavalle, our current planning director, is named as those three. Both Jim and Beth uh, had gone from the General Assembly onto the Executive Board, and that is the process. So any of the three positions that you so name here this evening. For the General Assembly would be available for nomination from the floor uh, to uh, the Executive Committee. Um, our recommendation is that you uh, re-up Beth Delavalle as your planning director. Uh, and that you consider naming the pending new economic development director as a second of those seats. Uh, and I would like to forego uh, my uh, seat by position and ask you to name uh, Ian Househill. Our community development director as that third seat uh, to the General Assembly.
Okay, um, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we um, approve the city manager's recommendation.
Second.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So the motion is by Deputy Mayor Hurley to approve the city councillor's recommendation and a second by councillor Brink. Any further discussion? Being none, I will call the vote. Councillor Brink?
Yes.
Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Unanimous of all those present. Hey. Um, twenty-two dash two-six-three dash zero-one. Order to accept the resignation of Robert Mung from the Sanford Trails Committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by councillor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Brink. I just want to mention that I, his resignation letter was that he just wasn't able to, to um, participate. And it used to be that the char- that the um, Trails Committee or the, um. Was able to um. Have any number of people, but they have a new charter so that it delineates how many they may have. So they will have to come back to us with, if they have another. Um, they want to put it out there to get a, another person to take that place. So. Um, we'll accept his resignation um, with regret. And I will take a vote on that. Councillor Brink?
Yes.
Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also. Okay, twenty-two dash two-eight-five dash zero-one. Order to make appointments to the Board of Assessment Review pursuant to sections two-zero-five-point-one and eight-zero-three of the Sanford City Charter. Steve, you're gonna present on this?
I think the o- the only presentation that I have is there are three names that are called out in, in here for the council's consideration. Uh, they've, they have affirmed their uh, desire and ability to serve on the Board of Assessment Review. That is the name of Steve Cabana, Emily Sheffield, and Amy Garnow. So those three names are brought forward. Uh, we cur- this, if, if the council so appoints these three individuals this evening. That will give us four active positions for the Board of Assessment Review. Uh, the city can name up to five. That's, that's my understanding that councillors are still looking for one additional name, but nonetheless. Need a minimum of three to perform the functions of the Board of Assessment. Uh, assuming that the three are appointed this evening and we're, we're back to four. Um, impending the, the, the appointment of the fifth. We anticipate the need to activate the Board of Assessment Review for a pending uh, filing. Uh, we would again have uh, the city's attorney, Phil Saucier, come in and provide uh, an evening of training. Again, for this uh, newly named uh, Board of Assessment Review. Uh, so that they can take up the task of taking any appeal for uh, this year's assessments.
Okay, then. And these are all three-year terms that we're appointing them to, correct?
That is correct.
All right, then I will ask for a motion um, to appoint um, Steve Cabana, Emily Sheffield, and Amy Garnow. To three-year terms on the Board of Assessment Review. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, I'll give the motion to councillor Hanselman and the second to councillor Brink. Any discussion? Being none, then we will vote. Um, councillor Brink?
Yes.
Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. And thanks to them, thanks to the, the, the individuals who stepped up to serve on this board because it is necessary. When you need it, you need it. Um, okay. Twenty-two dash two-six-zero dash zero-one. Order to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the scope of work for Phase Two of Presidential Lane Extension. With Jamco excavators in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. I think Allison is gonna be presenting on this. Allison Navia?
Yes, good evening. I'm Allison Navia. I'm the Airport Manager of our Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. Tonight, I bring before you the scope of work for Phase Two of the Presidential Lane Extension. If you'll remember, we entered into a contract after going through a bid process and selecting Jamco as the low bidder. For the overall contract. That contract was written in such a way that it would allow us to phase the project. Pretty much in an unlimited fashion until we finish, based on the amount of funding that we could get year over year. So um, the total project cost was about one-point-three million. Phase one, we did just shy of um, four-hundred thousand last year to get the vast majority of all of the. Utilities run to about eight-hundred-and-fifty feet down of the um, fourteen-hundred-foot road. That gets us to two new hangars that we're able to tie in last year, one of which was a new, completely new construction. We have one um, additional hangar that is gonna be constructed within the next couple of months. That will be part of this Phase Two. Part of the project. And Phase Two, we had to negotiate back and forth quite a bit. There was an amount of work that I was hoping that we could get done. Um, and just the funding wouldn't allow it with what we were able to get approved in the budget this year. So we were able to approve um, for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar bond. That will be um, paid back through the Tax Increment Financing District, the SOLER, so that this. This project won't impact taxation when we pay back that bond. Um, the project's also cash flowed with the infrastructure fees that every one of those new developments. Pays when they tie into the project and use the utilities in the road. So the scope of work for Phase Two that we got negotiated down um, to the two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand and change. Includes the drainage on the sides that you can see there, that big drainage swale. The looming and seeding on each side of the road. And then also a twelve-inch gravel base so that it makes the road passable by vehicles. So all of these hangars will be able to access the backs of their hangar with their vehicles after this year and this phase is done. In subsequent years, what we'll look at doing is running the utilities. Basically, the rest of the way down, as you see on the screen right here, and then do the stub that drives in. That stub is for emergency vehicles, so that allows the fire department to be able to get to all sides of the building and do. A loop around that whole area when they need to. Um, so the, the next few phases will get us. That far and then eventually pave the road.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve or?
Motion to approve.
Motion by councillor Martel, is there a second?
A second.
Second by councillor Hanselman. Any discussion by the council or questions? And then we will vote. Councillor Brink?
Yes.
Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Okay. Twenty-two dash two-seven-one dash zero-one. Order to authorize the Chief of Police to enter into an animal shelter service agreement with Pope Memorial Humane Society, Cochico Valley. Uh, Chief Anderson, are you going to report on this this evening?
Yes, I am.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Deputy Mayor and the council. Essentially, what's in your packet, we've discussed at the Public Safety Committee meeting. And our presentation was in an effort to better, better spend the taxpayers' dollars. Currently, we pay a per capita fee for a contract with Animal Welfare Society and kind of a hoop. Again, as I mentioned in the, in the um, subcommittee meeting, they do an excellent job. They have a great staff and they've served us well for many years. However, the pricing for AWS is gonna go up to three-thousand-nine-hundred dollars a year. We calculated of what that would cost, what it, what it's cost per, per pet or per animal that we bring. And if we look at just the first quarter of this year, January, February, and March, the Animal Control Officer brought six animals to AWS. Um, if, so we would pay seven-five-hundred dollars for six animals. That's pretty expensive. If we contract with Pope Memorial, it would be fifty dollars per, per animal. And so we're looking at three-hundred dollars. So we feel like it's quite a cost savings for, uh, for the budget, for the taxpayers. And we're hoping that the council will support this move. I would like to say that we are, this is in conjunction with the next item as well, which is to also link into another chance, animal shelter. Which is for cats only. So we would take dogs to Pope Memorial and cats to another chance, which is in Sanford North Berwick. And um, and we feel like we don't really take that many animals to the shelter. And given the history of what our ACO has been able to do with reuniting animals. Play, posting the photos on Facebook and getting them back to families. We, we don't think that we're spending our money wisely with a thirty-thousand-dollar uh, contract to AWS.
Uh, thank you, Chief Anderson. And um, I will ask for a motion and a second, and then we can have a discussion. If there is one to be had.
Uh, move, move to approve.
Motion by councillor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
I just have.
Martel.
I, I just have one question.
Go ahead, councillor Stackpole.
Uh, wh- where is Pope Memorial located, chief?
Dover, Dover, New Hampshire.
Okay, so it, it's a little ways away. So it's a li- little bit longer trip if you lose your dog than going to Kennybunk. But uh, I, I understand the finances. I, I do support uh, your, your choices here. Um, mm, and I had a second question and it has flown out of my mind, but uh, thank you.
Well, if you think of it, you can put your hand up again. Councillor Hanselman, go ahead.
I just wanted to share that this came out of a Public Safety Subcommittee with full consensus. Um, you know, Steve unfortunately wasn't able to join us at the meeting, so I did just want to get his nod on the um, out-of-state. Um, partnership, as that was kind of a question that would come up in a prior year. It sounds like we're good to go as other municipalities are using um, this particular location as well. But um, and then the, the only other thing I wanted to mention, um, that I said at Public Safety is that I, I personally would like to consider that some of these savings. Um, that will, for the next budget cycle, that we consider setting even a small amount of money aside. To cover the required cost of any veterinary care that has to be provided um, in the, uh, as part of our um. Municipalities requirement. So that's just something I want to keep in our minds uh, for the next budget cycle, um, which I mentioned at Public Safety. So, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Hanselman. I see councillor Stackpole remembered what he wanted to ask.
Yeah, I remember. Uh, it was just, just a point, um, where we're redesigning our website. And the chief did mention that uh, using Facebook to help locate animals and things like that. Maybe, maybe uh, leave this to others. We could have a special place on our website where uh, somebody loses their, their pet. Uh, y- you know, they click on lost pets and that information uh, is there on our website. In addition to whatever else, Facebook or, or whatever, so.
Thank you, councillor Stackpole. And I have to say that I wanted to do this last year. And there was that issue with the fact that it was in another state, so I'm really glad that we resolved this. This is, to me, it's, it's money in our pockets. It just seemed ridiculous to spend that much money. Take our dogs. I mean, Kennybunk and Dover, to me, they're almost the same, so. Have to be some benefits to living on the border of New Hampshire. So without, i- if there are no other questions or comments, then I will ask councillors to vote. Councillor Brink?
Yes.
Councillor Martel?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous vote. Okay, and this is the sister agreement, which would take care of the cats. Twenty-two dash two-eight-zero dash zero-one. Order to authorize the Chief of Police to enter into a forty-eight-hour shelter agreement between the City of Sanford. And another cha- chance animal rescue for cats surrendered by the Animal Control Officer. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is, by, motion by councillor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Martel. Is there any need for any more discussion on this item? Seeing none, then I will call the vote. Councillor Brink?
Yes.
Councillor Martel?
Oh, yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am a yes also. So that is unanimous. Great.
Very good.
Okay. Twenty-two dash two-eight-three dash zero-one. Order to receive from the City Treasurer tax-acquired property. Find my paper. Due to the non-payment of twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty real estate tax lien. Steve, who's gonna present on this this evening?
Uh, our uh, treasurer and tax collector, Erin McMahon, please.
Okay, Erin. Floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You know, I'll wait till he brings up the. So there was five properties that uh, no, no matter how many times we reached out to them, we didn't get any um, response back. Um, except for one, that Two Oscar Ave is a building and land. Um, currently, it is vacant right now. Um, due to um, health issues with the owner. And the other four properties are land. Um, so they're up for discussion at some point of what um, the council decides to do with the properties.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve and a second, and then we can have a discussion if there is?
Move, move to approve.
Motion by councillor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Brink. Um, Steve, did you have any, you want to follow up on it and comment on any of these, any reasons why we shouldn't? Fake these?
Other, you know, uh, there's no reason why you shouldn't. These properties have already gone through the, the primary review. That looks at pro- properties that could be problematic from an environmental standpoint or other uh. Element for where you might grant a, a waiver of foreclosure and not foreclose on those. Um, even though there's five properties here, um. Erin, I forget how many hundreds of properties you start with in this process. We're now down, down to five. Um, and many, uh, some of these parcels of vacant land, I noted that two of those. Um, well, one of those is landlocked, right? Uh, and they had offered that to the city. Uh, uh, previously, uh, I do find value in that, in that it's landlocked. But it's, it, it contains environmentally sensitive wetland areas that, uh, it could be used for uh, mitigation going forward. Place conservation easements on that. Another one uh, is also at the end of a. City-owned street, uh, and it's adjacent to the landfill and it's prime, uh, almost entirely wetlands. So there's, there's very little value to that as well. There's a uh, now vacant lawn on Twenty-two North Ave that's listed in here, Thirty-three Island Ave. Uh, that is a dangerous and hazardous structure uh, that from the fires from quite a number of years ago. Was remediated. There's no structure on that any longer. And then Erin knows the, the predominance of the details as far as Two Oscar Avenue. It's my understanding the individual. Uh, is now under medical care, uh, and that the property has been let go and it is in a state of extreme uh, disarray. It was a property that'll have to be dealt with uh, after acquisition uh, by the expired tax lien. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation, Steve. Any questions or comments by councillors? Councillor Martel, go ahead.
Um, yeah, just a quick question around um, especially Two Oscar Avenue. Um, I understand that. You know, the person has some medical issues. Um, is that something that? They've tried to apply for a hardship? Do they, are they letting it go? Are they expecting to try to reoccupy that home? Or is trying to give people as many options as they can here, possible?
I can answer that. We've made multiple attempts. He had several different addresses. Um, and up until about a month before the foreclosure. Um, and up until about a month before the foreclosure date, we didn't even realize there was somebody living in the house because it's in such distress. And so at that point, we started hand-delivering notices and a couple of people reached out on his behalf. One was a case manager with Mean Health. He did have options to leave the property with public housing and chose not to seek those out. As far as his medical issues, he's no longer in the house right now and understands, you know, his case manager understands, he understands that it's, it's gone through foreclosure.
Okay, so he is not intending to pursue any sort of options to try to-
No, we did explain to him that he could apply for an abatement and he did not seek the application or submit one back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, then I will call the vote. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Okay, I make sure I don't skip anything. Twenty-two dash two-seven-nine dash zero-one. Order to set the due dates for the 2022 Real Estate and Personal Property Tax Commitment as follows. First installment due by September fifteenth, 2022, and second installment due by March fifteenth, 2023, with a delinquent interest rate of 4% as determined by the State Treasurer. Interest will begin to accrue on the first installment on September sixteenth, 2022, and on the second installment on March sixteenth, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move we approve.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Hanselman. Discussion, or Steve, did you have anything that you wanted to say? Hope it's pretty standard stuff.
Yes, and I would recommend that you, you accept the, uh, state rate as well. Thank you.
All right, any more discussion by the Council? I will call the vote. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous. Twenty-one dash four-seven-one dash zero-one. Approve the bid for the removal of vehicles from the Eight York Street property. And I'm assuming that is the proper language that I am, we are supposed to use. And if it's not, I will read it later if it is incorrect. So is, um, is community, is Ian Housefield going to present on this, Steve?
Uh, yes, he is. Ian, you have the screen.
Yes, thank you. Um, I don't need the screen on this. Um, you have all the material in your packet. Um, this is following up, um, to an enforcement action by the City Council. Um, you referred this to the court, uh, for, um, enforcement. Uh, in your packet is a court order, um, as filed in the Registry of Deeds, um, ordering the, the vehicles in the backyard cleaned up regarding the nuisance. Um, I put this out for, um, bid, uh, for starters, for the removal of five vehicles from the property. And, uh, I put that, uh, request, uh, for pricing out to three local, um, towing and recovery companies. Um, uh, Grandin Towing and Recovery, um, uh, was, um, responsive. The other ones were responsive as well, but declined to bid. Um, and, um, they proposed a price of $2,450, uh, to remove said vehicles and offered, um, to remove, um, additional, um, automobile parts and, um, uh, and, and debris, um, for, for additional cost. Um, that's in the keeping of the city's purchasing policy and, um, that's what I'm bringing forward you tonight. Partly to make it public, so you know that, um, this is being resolved. Uh, and, um, we'll schedule a time to have these vehicles removed. Um, the Police Department will be present, um, when we do this. And, um, and then from there, um, uh, this will be assigned as a, um, a tax, um, a, a tax, uh, to the property, um, that could result in a, uh, tax lien if left unpaid.
Um, so Ian, just to, to clarify, do I, do you want this motion to authorize a twenty-four-hundred? Is, did you say $2,450 bid by Grandin?
Uh, you don't need to. Um, that would be just a generally award because it's within, with, uh, below the $10,000 limit.
Okay, then. I'll ask for a motion to approve the bid for the removal of vehicles from the Eight York Street property. There are motions. Motion by Counselor Stackpole, and I didn't see who the second was.
Think it was Becky.
And the second by Counselor Brink. Any more discussion by the Council? Counselor Martel?
Thank you. Um, Ian, was there any contact with the owner around this? Um, it looks like there's been some court filings and then, you know, obviously there's a bunch of pictures. Um, is there any sort of background from the owner's perspective on this?
Uh, there has been contact with the owner. Um, a code enforcement officer, uh, Letter, um, was able to speak with him about the, the, the need to, um, remove the vehicles. Um, I've sent, uh, three letters, um, to the property owner, including the court order explaining, um, what needed to be done, um, providing timelines, um, uh, notifications of what dates we would be coming to the property to inventory the, um, vehicles to be removed, um, and, um, and when that was all going to be taking place. Um, so, uh, yes.
Um, hang on a second, Diane. I'll let you comment after I just get all the counselors to, um, to, if there's any, but any counselors that have anything else they'd like to say. I just want to say that I've been down there. I was down there, I think, two days ago. It is, it, it has been a long time coming. So I'm hopeful that the neighbors will be a lot happier when those vehicles are gone.
Yeah, I'm just kind of surprised.
Diane, did you still have something that you, oh, Jonathan, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I was just commenting that, um, sorry, I should have put my hand back up. Um, you know, with, there's, there's scrap places that'll haul them off for, for free. I'm surprised that he isn't taking that option instead of having to pay outright. Thank you.
I think it's that they don't want them to be gone, so maybe that's the issue. But Ian, if you wanted to answer that?
Well, I, I, I would defer to the Police Department if they have anything else to add.
No, I meant about what Jonathan said, that there are people that will come and take them for free, that we wouldn't have to pay.
Yes, and, and I would defer to the Police Department if they have anything to add.
Oh, okay, all right. So it's a, it's a-
No, I just meant it from the homeowner's perspective, instead of, you know, having a, an extra $2,500.
I think the issue is he doesn't want them gone.
Yeah, that's fair. Okay, thank you.
Um, Diane, did you have something as a member of the public that you'd like to say?
Um, just requesting that the ACO goes down and checks, uh, under the hoods and everything of these vehicles for any animals. Thank you.
You mean ones that are alive?
Yep.
Okay, I don't know if I'd want that job, but, okay. We have a motion. Do we have a motion? Did I ask for a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. We will vote unless there's further discussion that people feel is necessary. Seeing none, Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Thank you. Okay, twenty-two dash two-eight-four dash zero-one. Order to authorize the City Manager to institute by the Corporation Council in the name of the City, any and all actions legal or equitable against the property owner and parties in interest of the property that is the Boiler House of the International Woolen Mill on Tax Map Law, J twenty-nine dash twenty-four, that may be appropriate or necessary, including injunctions of violations and the imposition of fines that may be appropriate or necessary to enforce pursuant to City Code, Chapter ninety, Building and, and Building Regulation and Chapter two-eighty dash three dash five.
With pleasure.
I think I'm just gonna, sorry.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna move to approve. If you don't want me to do that, I won't.
No, I actually was gonna ask for a motion to approve and we can have discussion because I think we're all familiar with this.
Yeah, so I'm gonna say-
Motion by Counselor Stackpole?
With, with pleasure, I am making a motion, uh, yes.
Second by anybody, is there a second? Second by Counselor Brink. Okay, Steve, do you want to just review this for the public? What's, what this is, what this will do? And then we'll ask for any discussion by counselors.
I'm gonna quickly turn this over to Director Housefield. This is asking the Council to, to allow us to move forward with an 80K action on, on, uh, Tax Map Law, J twenty-nine twenty-four. This is the Boiler House, uh, that contains the stack. We've all seen in recent, uh, the dangerous and hazardous building actions the Council took on this, the deplorable state of the property. Uh, this would give us further enforcement mechanisms, uh, as far as perfecting, uh, the dangerous and hazardous building order. Uh, I'll turn it over to Director Housefield to, uh, give you a better scope of the work that's been done on this to date and why this action is being, um, asked for. Director Housefield?
Thank you. Um, so, um, furthermore, um, the instances when the City Council takes enforcement action against properties are very limited. Um, the ordinances, your, your, your laws require that the City Council, uh, vote to take, um, properties to court, just like we discussed the Eight York Street property. Um, you're, you're bringing complaint, um, before the court. Uh, this would be specific to, um, Court Rule, uh, eighty and then K, um, a code enforcement, um, um, uh, rule under the court. Um, the, what, what we'd be seeking here is, is fees and fines regarding this. Um, since the City Council held a dangerous building in, uh, January, um, uh, we've been diligently pursuing, um, the owner and, um, being, um, led down a path, um, of trying to identify, um, that, that owner. Um, as recorded in the Registry of Deeds, the owner is a company called Regco. Um, we've established, um, that the owner is, is by name Mario Frate. Um, and, um, he's the owner of this property. Um, we will specifically name him, um, in the complaint. Um, and, uh, we will diligently pursue, um, those fines. Um, there is a, uh, immediate, um, uh, danger of this property. Um, the, you know, as, as you've previously heard, um, the roof is collapsing on this structure. Uh, additionally, the stack is at risk of collapsing. Um, and, um, in the immediate sense, um, that, that's, that's the danger and any sort of impact that this might have on the surrounding properties. Um, so that, that's the, uh, item that we're, we're putting before you this evening, uh, to take this property to court, um, and seek fines and penalties and, and court order, uh, to pay those.
Thank you, Ian. And this is something that we get a lot of complaints about. So I, I think that this will be something that's been long awaited by a lot of people, including, as Counselor Stackpole said, the Council. Okay, any more discussion by the Council? Then I will ask for a vote. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That is unanimous. Oh, what time is it? It's eight o'clock. We have Councilmember comments. Counselor Brink, did you have anything this evening?
No, thank you.
Counselor Martel?
Uh, nothing for tonight, thank you.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that Friends of Downtown is about two weeks into the, uh, not, excuse me, the, uh, voting for the Best of Sanford Springvale or Boss Awards, as they've been dubbed, um, here in Sanford and Springvale. We've had over eight hundred respondents so far, which we're super excited about. You can find the survey on the Friends of Downtown Facebook page and it will also be available and performed this weekend at Franny's Mini Donuts. I just wanted to give those, um, that initiative a shout out and also want to wish the, uh, top ten Sanford High School graduates, uh, congratulations on their great accomplishment. That just came out, uh, recently, as well as all of our students that will be graduating in less than a month now. So, thank you.
Counselor Stackpole?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, uh, first of all, the street cleaner went, uh, up and down my street today and that was really nice to see and I'm, I'm glad to see that out and about. Uh, and, uh, it's a pleasure to have the, the, the mess as all we do have, all, as we all do have a mess in front of our curbs in our house. Uh, I'm gonna go off script a little bit here, try not to be too lengthy about, uh, about this, but, um, I just feel the need, uh, at this time to, to put my oar in the water on this. First of all, I have no idea what the, uh, political party affiliations are with any of the counselors. Uh, the Council is nonpartisan, uh, and, uh, and it needs to stay that way. You know, we all have our different political persuasions, uh, but we, we, we leave those certainly as best we can. We have a value system that goes along with those, uh, political persuasions. Uh, but we leave those political, uh, persuasions parked at the door when we come to a committee meeting. I have some very, very serious concerns, and, and this is, uh, wording to, to the public. I have some very, very serious concerns about partisan politics entering into both, uh, into our political context here locally. Right now, we're all able to focus on what's best for Sanford, the needs of Sanford. And it's a balanced approach. Nobody gets what they want. Uh, you know, there's negotiations, it goes back and forth. If you look around, you see that partisan politics has begun to infiltrate, if you will. It's, it's, that's more of a nasty word than I wanted to use, but it's the, it's starting to become a part of both school committees and local politics, councils, things like that. And this is something that's concerned me for quite a while. Uh, I'm very concerned when we, in the budget review, uh, process that, uh, uh, that we're, we're, uh, that we're going through, that I'm participating in, that a minority of individuals, as we go through particular things like the budget process, uh, things like that, uh, a minority of people can't come and hijack the whole process. Uh, that's been a concern of mine forever, since I've been in politics, that a, a, a vocal minority can come in and while the majority is not looking, uh, they can, they can, uh, manipulate the, uh, the process. Uh, unfortunately, uh, in not speaking to the issue, although I support 100% the decision that the, that the mayor made, it's, it's, it's here, right? Uh, it happened tonight and, uh, this is the beginning. Um, I'll, I'll say this to everybody. If you vote them in, that's gonna be your problem. Uh, you need to pay attention to people and you want people on your committees who are nonpartisan, who care about Sanford, who care about the people in Sanford, who care about the important issues in Sanford, like safety. Public safety, number one. Infrastructure, good education for their children, a balanced education. And you need to be prepared. This onslaught is coming. I'm not saying any of these candidates are one way or the other that you're gonna be voting for, for June. I don't know them, okay? Uh, certainly the person who presented tonight didn't present any, uh, left or right politics. And this can come from the left as well as the right. And once the left gets involved, then the right's gonna push back. Once the right gets involved, then the left's gonna push back. And it's going to be about partisan politics. It's not going to be about what's best for Sanford. Okay, I'm gonna say that one more time. It's gonna be about partisan politics. It's not gonna be about what's best for Sanford. Right now, we're in politically good times. All of your Councilmembers, and as far as I know, all of the school committee members, we all get along. We've known each other for a long time. We've all been in the trenches. We know how to work with each other and, believe it or not, there's funding around and we're able to make some giant progressive leaps in infrastructure and fixing up our city and fixing up our schools. As we work together and we do that. Beware, this is coming. Please beware, okay? Beware. This is coming. Please beware, okay? The good times are not gonna last forever, okay? And sorry for the soapbox, but I just had to get that out.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'm staying away from politics because I serve on a nonpartisan board, which I enjoy. Anyway, just a couple things. First of all, I've been in the trenches of a road construction project this week. It's so much fun to have your roads torn up all around you, but obviously, great experiences with all the people working here. Water District, I think, changed all the water lines on Twombly, the upper section of Twombly, this week. So we've lost water for various bits of time. We got to see railroad ties under the street, clay, big twelve-inch clay pipes, you know, good neighborhood conversations. Anyway, they've done a great job. They're always very polite. I wanted to give a shout out, especially to the Sanford Water District this week. The Public Works was on top of it if there was something they needed to see. So it was a good project so far. I have to change a galvanized water line, which is, you know, my little piece of the puzzle, because they noticed that one of my water lines going to a two-family house was galvanized, so I have to change that. So my budget keeps, you know, getting crushed this year, but again, the guys are great. Just another, Nate reminded me, Mr. Hitchcock reminded me, the Mayners are starting in three weeks, on June seventh. We know it is graduation week. We always tend to have at least one week where we're pounded by graduation activities. But opening day, again, June seventh, we're looking forward to a great season. I ask everybody to start praying now for a non-rainy season, because that always goes over much better. I am much happier when I don't have to reschedule my life for a rain delay game. So if everybody would help me with that, I would much appreciate it. And other than that, that's it for this evening, I guess. I guess our next time we'll all see each other, I'm assuming we're all gonna try to make it to the Memorial Day Parade this year, to walk with the veterans.
That's right, and that information is available, I think, in many places, including the Sanford-Springvale News. I just have a couple of comments this evening. The first is that I came into City Hall today, and I checked my mailbox, and I found these wonderful poodle earrings that were left in my box. And anybody that knows, our family knows that we have a black poodle, Lucy. Well, these are black poodles. I can't believe it. And I wanted to just say a thank you to Jessica Warner, and she made them for me, and they're, her company is Retro to Metro Jewelry. She has an Etsy, she's on Etsy. So, thank you, Jessica. I hope you guys can see them. I know that the black, it's like having a poodle, you can't see the poodle face. They kind of blend into anything in the background. So anyway, thank you, Jess. I have something sad that I just, I just felt the need to mention. You know, this past week, we had, for me, two losses that I think were very meaningful to the community. Ray Sharpentier, who was born and raised in Sanford, passed away on May, I think it was May eighth, at the age of ninety-one. A plumber who worked till he was ninety-one, I think. You know, he embodies a lot of what Sanford and Springville is all about. And Steve Cumka passed away a few days ago. And Steve wasn't born and raised in Sanford, but he was a transplant, nineteen eighty-five. And he brought and raped his family here. The kids went to school. He became an integral part of this community. And there are two men that will really be missed, and I just felt the need to mark those passages this evening. And I think that's all I have. So any agenda items, I think I'll just look and see if anybody has any agenda items. I won't go through the list. We do have a lot planned in the future, so check your emails and keep in touch. And thank you all this evening, and I will declare, oh, I'm sorry, Jonathan has his hand up.
Yeah, I know I didn't make it last week, but I did ask Ian or somebody from the Roads Department to talk about the paving schedule. Did that happen, or is that on a future agenda?
It's Bennett Public Safety, and it's going to be up there. They're just updating things.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Anything else from anyone, any agenda items that we haven't addressed? All right. Thank you all. See you at the Memorial Day Parade.
Good night.
Thank you.